Chairwoman Anne Floyd Huggins, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. And I want to welcome you to our first meeting of the year, Pitt County Board of Commissioners. I want to say good evening to all of our citizens who are listening by way of YouTube, Zoom, and watching. So, and also to all of our participants on the call this evening. Welcome. So at this time, I will call the Pitt County Board of Commissioners to meeting to order. We'll have invocation by Melvin McGlaughorn and pledge by our county manager. I'm sorry. We should have a roll call first. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Present.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Commissioner Albright.
Present.
Commissioner Coulson.
Here.
Commissioner McGlaughorn. Commissioner McGlaughorn.
Looks like he's muted.
Here.
Commissioner Nunnally.
Here.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yeah.
Everyone is present.
Thank you. Now we will have invocation and then the pledge. invocation by Melvin McGlaughorn.
Shall we pray? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Eternous Father, we come this evening to thank you for your bringing us into a brand new year 2021. This year, we ask that you help us to be more like you in all that we may do or say. God and lead us this evening. It's our prayer. We ask this in thy holy name. Amen.
All right, if we can get a display of the flag, please. Okay. I will let us on the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the One Nation.
Thank you. At this time, we have a motion to approve the agenda. I see Commissioner Nunnally's hand.
Madam Chair, so moved.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Here. I mean, present. Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnally.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Managers, do we have any public address to the board?
No, ma'am. We have nobody signed up unless there's somebody on the call who was wanting to speak. If they'd raised their hand, otherwise no.
Okay. Don't see any hands raised. So, we will now go to the presentation, which is a proclamation recognizing January 2021 as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month. And we have with us Pam Strickland, along with some of her members of the board, I believe, are also on the call. Scott.
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins. As you mentioned, we have Pam Strickland, who is the Executive Director for the county's Stop Human Trafficking effort here. And she has invited her board, and I think maybe we could maybe open up for comments from her, and if you would like, we could read the resolution. I think her board is just here for support. I don't think they're going to speak necessarily. They can if they need to, but if our PO would recognize Pam Strickland, we'll have brief comments from her that move into the formal resolution.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And just to clarify, I do have several folks here with me. I have eight folks, and they are all members of the Pitt County Coalition Against Human Trafficking. Not members of the board for NC Stop Human Trafficking. And one of the reasons that I asked them to come is so that the commissioners could see what a wide variety of support the coalition has from different agencies and nonprofits throughout the county. And I did want to mention to you, you know, one of the things that our coalition and our nonprofit has to, I won't say fight, but deal with a lot, is that folks don't believe human trafficking happens here. They don't believe it happens in the U.S. and certainly not in North Carolina, and no way could it happen in Pitt County. And sadly, we were reminded in a very tragic way a couple of weeks ago that yes, indeed, human trafficking does happen here in our community. When a beautiful young woman's life was cut short, after experiencing trafficking for we don't know how long, she was only 16 when she died of an apparent overdose. So, again, just a reminder that yes, it's happening here and that we are blessed to have so many community members that are willing to work on this issue and try to prevent something like that from happening again. To that end, I wanted to mention a couple of things. The next Pitt County Coalition meeting is on January 21st, and it's virtual, as everything is these days. And our speaker this month is a senior analyst from the North Carolina Internet Crimes Against Children Division of the FBI, the North Carolina FBI. And that's relevant because ICAC, as they call it, has received over twice as many calls in 2020 as they did in 2019. We believe as a result of our kids being online so much more during the whole COVID crisis. So she's going to be with us to kind of break those numbers down a little bit and to share what the process is from the time someone makes a call saying, hey, it looks to me like a minor is being exploited or something bad is happening to a minor online. What happens from the time that tip is made? So that could be a really interesting meeting that we'd invite you all to attend. And also did want to mention that we are trying, our nonprofit is trying to protect our children. And tomorrow, in fact, our community outreach coordinator will be presenting a webinar on talking to kids about boundaries and consent and pornography. And then we've got one a little bit later this month about talking to kids about, excuse me, about tips for keeping kids safe online. So we would invite you to join us for that. On Wednesday, I'll be conducting a webinar on Human Trafficking 101. So if there are any of our commissioners that perhaps haven't taken advantage of a training like that, then we would certainly invite you to participate in that webinar. Oh, I did want to mention, you can't really see mine because my sweater is the same color as my ribbon, but normally when I'm there and I get to be with y'all in person, I bring you all blue ribbons for Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And today is actually Human Trafficking Awareness Day and Wear Blue Day. So you see, I was looking, Melinda and I both got the memo and are wearing our blue. But anyway, thank you very much for being willing to sign the proclamation and for allowing us to come and be with you this evening.
I believe, I see Commissioner Albright, hand up. Do you have a question or comment? Commissioner Albright.
Okay, yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Strickland, for all your work and your folks. I would love to move that we accept the resolution with gratitude for all the work that's gone into it. I wondered if Ms. Strickland could just take a moment and introduce us to the folks who have come with her. And I know it would delay us a little bit, but I think we should recognize their efforts.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Yes, the folks who are with us are my colleague, Melinda Sampson, who's the Community Outreach Coordinator for NC Stop Human Trafficking. We have with us Bonnie Jean Curris, who is a community outreach staff person from Teddy Bear Child Advocacy Center. We have Travis White, who is with the Pitt County Sheriff's Department and is devoted full-time to investigating human trafficking cases. We have with us Deshaun Lane, who is also with Pitt County Sheriff's Office, who does community outreach. We have Minerva Freeman, who is a member of the Pitt County Coalition and just as you all well know, actively engaged in many aspects of the community. We have Maria Pinto, who is an advocate at the Center for Family Violence Prevention. We have Marie Welch, who is a retired nurse and a longtime board member and volunteer for NC Stop Human Trafficking. And we have Mr. Ferris Dixon, who is a board member, the Pitt County District Attorney's Office is a member of the Pitt County Coalition. And Mr. Dixon is also a board member for NC Stop Human Trafficking. Did I miss anybody?
That's terrific. Thank you. And again, I do move that we go forward with the resolution.
Mr. McGlaughorn.
Glad to second that, please.
Okay, madam clerk, it's been moved to second. Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnally.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And then we have the reading of the proclamation.
Okay, so our proclamation is entitled Proclamation Recognizing Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month, January 2021. Whereas human trafficking involves the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision, buying or selling of human beings for the service of labor of commercial sex through the use of force, fraud, or coercion. And whereas human trafficking violates basic human rights and deprives victims of human dignity and freedom, victims are dehumanized and forced into the modern-day slavery. And whereas human trafficking is a growing global and national problem, with North Carolina being consistently ranked in the top 10 states for prevalence in human trafficking. And whereas it is imperative that we educate our communities, our young people and families, to take an active interest in learning how to recognize the risks and resist predators who use coercion and threats to manipulate children as young as 12 into labor or sex trafficking. And whereas in recognition of the need for that education, the North Carolina General Assembly enacted legislation mandating that sex trafficking prevention and awareness information be included in the sexual health education curriculum. And whereas the North Carolina General Assembly enacted legislation in 2019 mandating sex trafficking training being provided to all public school personnel. Whereas the Pitt County Coalition Against Human Trafficking seeks to eradicate human trafficking by empowering organizations and individuals through collaboration, leadership, and training. And whereas the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, the Pitt County Department of Social Services, the Pitt County Schools, and many other organizations are active members of the Pitt County Coalition Against Human Trafficking. And whereas Pitt County is committed to protecting people vulnerable to human trafficking and acting to end human trafficking through prevention, prosecution, and partnerships. Now therefore, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim January 2021 as, quote, "Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month" in Pitt County and commends its observance to all citizens, signed by our Chairwoman Anne Floyd Huggins and attested by our Clerk Kimberly W. Hines.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And again, Pam, we thank you. We thank the coalition for coming, and we are honored to recognize this as Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Again, thank you so much.
Thanks for your support.
Yeah. All right. At this time, next on the agenda is public hearing. We're going to open it up for a public hearing, I believe. It's next. Mr. Manager.
Yes, we're going to turn this to James Rhodes. You have a public hearing for a conditional district rezoning case.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have one zoning item for your consideration tonight during a public hearing. I'll share my screen, and once I get confirmation that it is displayed on a full screen, we'll proceed with the staff presentation. And Carla, if you can confirm that everything is shown.
Yes, Mr. Rhodes, we see your presentation full screen.
Okay, thank you. Again, for tonight's meeting, we have one rezoning request, and this is from Mr. Otero and Ms. Markano. This is for rezoning request, and we'll talk about the specifics in just a minute. Actually, the location is on NC 43 South, and you'll be hearing a report in a minute. This is not surprising. We do get a lot of changes of zoning along NC 43 South. So you'll be hearing a report about that land use planning process in just a little while. But this is actually very close to the intersection with B Stokes Road, and it is for conditional district rezoning. So with that said, these will be particular uses that will be allowed if this rezoning is granted tonight. In particular, this is to allow office and repair garage and shop for a refuse material hauling business. And it's actually known as express waste removal and also a tax preparation services office. So a couple of different uses that are being requested tonight. Just to reorient you a little bit better as to where this is located, again, here's the intersection on NC 43 South with B Stokes Road. It's just north of there. This is, used to actually be a plant nursery next door, and you'll see in just a minute some of the various types of existing land uses in this particular area. As you can see, pretty much somewhat of a mixed use in this area. You may recall, right down B Stokes Road in the curve here was a recent rezoning to commercial for some self-storage facilities. Just next door to the property we're looking at tonight, again, this is about two acres in size. Just to the north, this is a large area that is already rezoned as general commercial, as well as a small signing graphic business that also is just a little bit further north. Our land use plan, primarily this area is suburban residential, small area along Hardy Creek that's also shown as agricultural, open to natural resource. That pretty much corresponds with the flood plain there. And just at the very top of your screen, you can also see a small area that's recognized as commercial, and that's a little bit further up at the intersection of Toll Road and NC 43 South. So suburban residential designation from our land use plan, and this is our comprehensive land use plan. That designation is intended to include residential land uses as well as some limited multifamily, commercial, office, light industrial that meet specific or specific locational criteria. And some of those criteria include frontage and access onto a major highway such as NC 43 South or at a major intersection in proximity to other similar land uses. In this case, these land uses that are being requested are commercial in nature. As far as our zoning map, you can see again, just next door and to the north is a fairly large tract that's already zoned as commercial. This is a signing graphics shop. This is also the mini storage buildings that we were talking about just earlier. The general commercial district is primarily intended to accommodate a large range of retail and service, office, wholesale, and moderate-density multifamily residential districts that have access to major thoroughfares and the necessary utilities to support such development. Mentioned earlier the types of uses that are being requested here. We feel like, and you'll see the staff recommendation in just a moment, but we feel like this is an appropriate area for some types of general commercial, but not the whole laundry list that our zoning ordinance affords. So in turn, what's being requested by Mr. Otero and Ms. Markano tonight is a conditional zoning district that would allow these particular uses. And the proposed uses are office and repair garage/shop for the refuse hauling business and also a tax preparation services office. And Mr. Otero has provided a sketch plan that you see on the screen now. I'll just briefly go over some of the items. If you're familiar with this property, there is an existing home on the site. It's not necessarily set up for any type of habitation at this point in time, pretty much being used for storage. That is what's intended to be used for the office in the future. So that's shown in blue on the screen. There's also a proposed new garage and shop further into the interior of the lot. There would be parking required. This particular tract that we're looking at primarily is wooded, especially along the perimeter of it. And there's an existing driveway that will be utilized already. Mr. Otero has also agreed or consented to additional screening. This would be on the north side, just as adjacent to one residential lot. He's agreed to include additional screening along that property line. There are several other items that are worth mentioning, too, as far as the administration of the rezoning, if it does take place. If it is approved tonight, no zoning compliance permit will be issued until a site plan is prepared in accordance with the zoning ordinance. A landscaping plan is also required. The required parking spaces, access drives, and loading areas all are required to be paid. There are some other development-type standards that typically talk about soil erosion, sedimentation control, stormwater requirements may be necessary depending on the amount of land that's disturbed. The existing structure that I mentioned earlier will need to be permitted and inspected by the county inspections office, as well as get the proper permits from environmental health. The location and design of any driveways are subject to the review and approval by DOT. As far as staff's recommendation, we are recommending approval, and we believe that it is consistent with the Pitt County Comprehensive Land Use Plan and given its location along a major thoroughfare and its proximity to other general commercially zoned properties. We believe it is reasonable and in public interest because the property is located along the major highway, close to other similarly zoned type of properties. And it will accommodate a range of retail and service for this area. The planning board also reviewed this at its December meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning. So with that, tonight, Madam Chair, we have two motions. Certainly, the first one is the consistency statement, and I won't go through reading that. And also another portion of that motion is to indicate that this request is reasonable and in the public interest. The second motion is to actually approve the rezoning subject to a number of additional conditions. And this is primarily to go along with and differentiate these uses from other type solid waste uses that are permitted by the zoning ordinance. So we went on from the staff's perspective to provide additional input and letting folks know this wouldn't be operated as a salvage yard. There are limitations on the number of vehicles that are allowed on-site that are not operational. Outdoor storage is only allowed for the uses that pertain strictly with these conditional district uses that are being asked for tonight. And again, we've already talked about the landscaping plan and the site plan that would be required as far, as well as some of the other requirements that were mentioned earlier. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm open for any questions, and we're ready to open the public hearing for consideration tonight.
Commissioner Nunnally. You did have your hand up.
Need to open the public hearing.
Okay. All right, the public hearing is now open. Do we have, need a motion?
Yes.
McGlaughorn.
If no one is speaking to the public here, I make a motion that we approve both motions as outlined by Mr. Rhodes.
Madam Chairman, woman, we do have one person signed up. I believe it's the applicant. I'm not sure if they want to speak or not, but O'Neal Otero. I don't know if you want to recognize them. They were signed up.
Okay. All right, we will recognize them if they would like to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Good night, everybody. Me and my wife, we are expecting, you know, this is a plan that we had for a couple of years. And thanks God and, you know, Grimber community were able to buy this property. And with the future of, you know, getting our shop and office running from there, from 43. And thankfully that, you know, with your guys' help, everything is going to be possible. going to be possible. Thank you.
All right. Nobody else to sign up to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay. On the other hand, so their questions are to make a motion. We don't know.
Your first hand, they're in order. Albright is first, McGawhorn second, Nunnely third, and White.
And you'll need to close your public hearing.
All right. Thank you. I do have a comment. Is it at this time?
I recommend you close your public hearing and then open to discussion by the board.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. We will now close the hearing, public hearing. McGawhorn?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve both, both, both motions as outlined by Mr. Rose.
Nunnely?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I second that motion. And I notice, just as a sidebar to the applicant, I noticed there's a historic property that seems that they might be used as an office in the future. Just hope the applicants aware of the various historic property tax credits that are available at the state level. So it's exciting to see our Pitt County properties reused and repurposed. So just make that sidebar comment and second the motion.
Okay. Okay. It's been closed, and we have a motion. And Madam Clerk, call the row.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McGawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Albright, you have your hand up?
Yes. I respectfully ask that before we proceed with votes, that we, when hands are raised, that we ask if there are questions or comments from the board before we proceed to the vote. And I'm glad to, I'm glad for this project here. And I had nothing negative to say, but my hand was up for a comment. And I'm sorry that the vote has been taken without allowing me to make that comment. Thank you.
I know, Mr. Albright, I wanted to bring a question in that I got a call on. And James did speak to it because he said it was not going to be used as a salvage yard. So that was the, the comment that I wanted to bring forth from a citizen, you know, was, was it going to be like a salvage yard or junkyard? That was what she said to me.
Thank you. My point is, please, that when we have items up for a vote, that we all be allowed to say what we have to say. And if our hands are up and a motion is made, I wish that we could have someone to say, is there other discussion before we proceed with the vote? That's my comment. My comment, I second what you were saying, Madam Chair, that that was my concern. I also wanted to say that I was really impressed with the graphics that our planning department did on that site map, the way they popped out all the colors there. So those are my only two comments. I totally support the project. I also totally support the idea that we all have an opportunity to speak when we have items coming up for a vote. Thank you.
Okay. I will ask, are the hands for a comment or to make a motion?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Manager, have we completed everything we need on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Now we will move to the employee service award. And you're going to handle that?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins. So tonight, we have a series of service awards to recognize with our workforce with Pitt County Government. We recognize, in the past, we've recognized everything from five years up to 45 years of service. Tonight, we'll be doing five to 30 years in the, this five-year increments. I will say that we, just as a side note, we do have at least one employee who is beyond 45 years. Maybe it'll stay till 50, maybe, maybe not. But in any case, so within the five-year category, we have the following employees: Natasha Atkins-Taff with DSS, Tanisha Armstrong, Corporate Extension Service, Carly Renee Jackson, Tax Administration, Terry Jenkins, Detention Center, James Kimery, Solid Waste and Recycling, Garrett Evan Neal, Animal Services, Katie Rebecca Peeden, Detention Center, and Bridget Perry within our Corporate Extension Department. In the tenure category, we have Carter Eugene Atkins, Sheriff's Office, Paula Dance, Sheriff's Office, Tanya Gaskins, Financial Services, Randy Gentry, Emergency Management, Charity Moore, Social Services, Joni Torries, Corporate Extension. With 15 years of service, we have Connie Renee Boyd, Social Services, Jeremy Manette, Sheriff's Office, and William Pittman, Tax Administration. In the 20-year category, and just to remind the board, at 20 years, employees do receive a, a watch that they get to pick out from a local jewelry shop in town. And we have four employees who are at their 20-year mark. First one is James Davenport with Buildings and Grounds, then Deion Dockery, Public Health, Renee Michelle Keys, Inspections, Permitting Center, and then Stephanie Allen, Sheriff's Office. In the 25-year category, we have two employees, Grace and Coward, Social Services, and Brian Haywood in the Detention Center. And in our last category, 30 years, we have two employees, Tammy Lewis, Social Services, and Linda Mitchell, Public Health. I will note that for the 20-year employees on the presentation of the watches, we are trying to meet with them, myself and our HR Director, Florida Hardy, trying to meet one-on-one with his employees, making that presentation. Otherwise, the certificates and other pins, lapel pins as such, are being delivered to the departments for the department heads then to pass on to their respective employees. And that's all we have.
Thank you. We want to say congratulations to all of the employees for their service rendered to Pitt County. Thank you. Then we will move on to items for report. We have James Rose up again. Mr. Manager, you have any comments before?
No, ma'am. We will turn it over to James to give this update on the NC 43 South Land Use Plan.
Okay, we're going to get right to NC 43 South again, as I alluded to in the previous presentation for the rezoning request. We are in the process of updating our, our land use plan along NC 43 South. So this is an individual, very similar to what we did with the Southwest Bypass Corridor. This is another rapidly growing area. That was pretty much a brand-new corridor. This is an existing corridor that we're continuing to see a lot of growth on. And as I also mentioned earlier, quite a number of rezonings going in along this corridor. So we felt like it was a real good time to move forward with this. We got started with this just before the pandemic. So we were able to get our first meetings in order last March, face-to-face. We've been in a virtual environment since that time, but we've had a lot of good input with some of that. And I'll get to some of those details in a minute. Just acknowledge, this is a fairly large group that's come together to bring this plan forward. And not only the county, but the city of Greenville's involved because part of the corridors within the city's jurisdiction. The Greenville Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization is participating. Certainly, the corridor, the transportation corridor is a major component to its planning efforts. So the MPO, as well as Department Transportation, have been involved. And we do have a consultant that's been working on this with a steward out of Raleigh, North Carolina. So just to orient you, where exactly the corridor that we're currently looking at, the study area in general, it starts just south of Fire Tower Road, and certainly that area is within the corporate limits of the city of Greenville. Heading on southward from there, the area you just dealt with, with the rezoning is around in this area, if you can see my cursor here, just near Toll Road. And then further south, here's your major intersection along this proposed corridor, the upgrade. And remember, there have been plans to pretty much move forward with upgrading this facility to a four-lane divided highway in the near future. However, just recently, the Department of Transportation has kind of postponed some of that. It's probably going to be at least five to six years before this particular project, the transportation improvements are put in place out in this area. So with that, though, a major interchange along the corridor would be here at Hollywood's Crossroads. This is DH Conley High School, just to the west side of there. And the reason this area bubbles out along Mills Road, Hope Middle School is right here, just outside of the study boundary. But this area that's shown in this kind of peach color here, those are the parcels that were just recently annexed by the city of Greenville. So with that, we know it's a major opportunity for additional sewer service in that area. We felt it was necessary to encompass that area for our study. And then from really Cox Crossing on further south, you can see it basically is about 1,000 foot either side of the corridor that runs all the way down to the Chicade area here. We do have a working group. You helped establish that. We've got a couple of planning board members involved, Brad Guth and David Davenport. There are some from the city of Greenville. We've got county and municipal staff, and certainly representatives from some of the service agencies such as Eastern Pines, Greenville Utilities, and Pitt County Schools is also involved. I mentioned earlier, some of our engagement efforts for the public, and again, started off in March of last year, right before things started shutting down for the pandemic. We were able to meet face-to-face at the Alice King Center. And from there on forward, we did public surveys. We had our first virtual public input session back in July, very well attended by a number of property owners and other service providers in that area. We had a second online public survey. Lot of good input was gleaned from those surveys, and we in turn rolled that back into some of our draft plan documents. We had other stakeholder interviews on August the 14th. And then we gathered all this information, came up with a draft plan to present at our second virtual public input session on the 16th of December. And since that time, we've also been soliciting additional public comments online. So that is running until Friday of this week, January 15th. We really encourage people, and I've got a slide at the very end of the presentation, to direct people towards that. If you don't get that link, you can always go online to the Pitt County webpage, Pitt County Planning Department webpage, and this is readily available there. So the reason we're kind of giving you this precursor is this plan is quickly coming your way. Our final working group meeting will be later this month. Our planning board is scheduled to hear this at a public hearing at their February meeting. And in turn, with that recommendation from the planning board, we'll be bringing it forward to the Board of Commissioners for a public hearing in March. So that's the tentative timeline right now. Again, as far as accessing the draft plan or providing comments, please go to our webpage. We're accepting those comments until January the 15th, and we'll forward those on to our planning board. You're welcome to contact me or Eric Gooby on staff here at the planning office if you have any questions. So with that, Madam Chair, that's just the brief report we have for the NC 43 South Land Use Plan.
Thank you, James. As he said, if you have questions, contact him or go to the website and make a comment. And right now, there's no action for us other than to receive this and wait until you go through the timeline and then bring it back to us, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll move to Public Health Director, Dr. Silvernail. Scott, you have any comments before?
No, ma'am. Unless I need to interject, or unless Dr. Silvernail would like me to interject.
Okay. Dr. Silvernail?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Going to try to share my screen here. Looks like they got me set up to do that. And get that to full size. There we go. Good evening, folks. I wanted to start out tonight, just by reviewing some general vaccine information with you. I thought it would help you in discussions or questions you might get from your constituents, and also would be good for our residents listening out there in Cyberland. So quick review of some vaccine terminology. What we refer to as the antigen is the part of the microorganism our immune system responds to. It's usually a protein. Antibody is a soluble protein produced by our immune system in response to a given antigen. And then there's something that we call cell-mediated immunity. And this is the immunity that resides in the chemical memory of our immune system cells. And sometimes the cells themselves get involved in immune response and directly attack invading microorganisms. So how do we make a vaccine? We need to find some way to deliver that antigen into our body so that our immune system can respond to it. And I'm going to give you sort of Silvernail's taxonomy of vaccine generations. It's an oversimplification of the real process, but I think you may find it helpful, again, in discussion with your constituents, and that our residents may find this helpful as well. What we might refer to as first-generation vaccines, in these, the organism is inactivated and then directly processed into a vaccine. Sometimes the organism is inactivated and then disrupted, and the antigen is extracted from it. And then that antigen is processed into a vaccine and administered to individuals. In the 1980s, with the advent of genetic technology, second-generation recombinant vaccines appeared on the market. In these cases, the genetic code for the antigen was inserted or isn't inserted into an organism. That modified organism is grown in culture and produces the antigen. The antigen is then extracted or harvested from that culture and processed into a vaccine. And an example of this that many of you are probably familiar with are the recombinant hepatitis B vaccines that have been around since the, since the late 80s. And many of us and many of our children have been vaccinated with these, these vaccines. They have a fantastic safety record and also efficacy that's in the 95-plus percent range across the brands of recombinant hepatitis B vaccines. The third generation of vaccines and what we're dealing with now in the, in the COVID pandemic is the idea of giving an RNA or DNA vaccine to people. This concept has been around for several years, if not longer. And rather than extract or grow the antigen, what has been done is to give the instructions to make the antigen to our body, and then our body produces the antigen. Both the current Pfizer and Moderna COVID-19 vaccines are what we call messenger RNA vaccines, meaning they carry the message to make a specific protein from the COVID virus into our cells, and then that protein is produced. In this case, these vaccines take instructions for the COVID spike, the COVID antigen, or what we call the spike protein. And we make that antigen in our body and then respond to it. This does take a few days to happen, but in time course, similar to other vaccine, in about two to three weeks, people have some degree of protection from even their first shot of the COVID vaccine. Another vaccine that's, that would fall into this third generation of RNA and DNA vaccine is one that AstraZeneca is working on. This is a DNA vaccine. The concept is very similar, except the instructions are written in DNA instead of RNA. This has now been approved by the FDA at this time, but this will use a, a virus that can't replicate to carry the DNA into our cells. And then that DNA will be transcribed to messenger RNA and made into the same spike protein. So kind of very interesting technology and how this third generation of vaccines is coming about at this time. And I wanted to take a minute to review that with you this evening. Want to talk to you about our Pitt County Health Department vaccine. We currently are receiving the Moderna COVID-19 vaccine. This is approved for individuals 18 years of age and older. It cannot be given to people who have received another vaccine in the past two weeks. Those folks must defer vaccination until they are at least two weeks from the, the other vaccine. If you are allergic to the vaccine or its components, this would be rare right now, since you've not been vaccinated yet. Or if you are allergic to something called Or if you are allergic to something called polyethylene glycol, which is used at the processing and manufacturing of the vaccine. It's a two dose series with dose one being given on day zero and then a booster dose on or after day 28. And as with other vaccines, we've realized that it's important to have a minimum spacing between the doses and that doing it on exactly the 28 day is not as important, but to make sure that there are at least 28 days between the two doses. Our vaccine operations, I know we talked about this late last week, but I wanted to review this with you tonight. At this time, we continue to host clinics for Phase 1A. This would include local healthcare providers predominantly at the Pitt County Health Department. Our daily capacity, again, depending on vaccine availability, is somewhere between 180 and 100 vaccinations per day. Today, we conducted our first Phase 1B Group 1 Vaccine Clinic. These are persons 75 years of age and older. And again, I forgive you for my casual appearance. I came directly from clinic to the meeting and am still in my scrubs from the clinic. We did this clinic at the Agricultural Center today. We gave 224 vaccinations and we will schedule additional clinics for this group next week, likely, once we receive our allotment of vaccine. We thought that was coming today, but it did not arrive today. So I'm kind of cautious. I would rather not schedule a clinic and have to cancel because vaccine didn't arrive. I want to make sure that we actually have the vaccine in our hands and our freezer before we go ahead and schedule clinics. We will make sure that there is ample notification of folks prior to opening any scheduling system for those clinics so that everybody has a fair chance to get scheduled for these vaccines. Overall, the operation today ran very, very well. People processed through. There was minimal wait time at any station. We did find that in comparison to other groups, probably did a larger percentage of 13 holds on people after receiving their vaccine. But overall, the operation was a success and people were very complimentary about how smoothly it ran today. We have scheduled booster doses at the time of first vaccination for this group and also for groups that have been vaccinated at the Health Department itself. And we are working because the booster dose process is a little bit shorter than the first dose process to consolidate those booster schedules and try to move those to perhaps evenings or weekend hours where we can run a large number of booster doses through in a shorter period of time because again, because we get to skip the education session on the second dose. Expanding vaccine delivery, again, pending availability. Last week, I met with the City of Greenville Occupational Health Clinic regarding moving boosters for Greenville Fire Rescue to their clinic. And that is in process. We know that very shortly, both Greenville Police Department and potentially Greenville Transit workers will be eligible to receive vaccine. We'd really like to see that done for the whole series through the Greenville Occupational Health Clinic that helps decompress our operations and allow us to serve other groups. I will also be meeting with the Greenville Utilities Corporation Occupational Health Clinic in the near future to discuss how we can vaccinate their employees when it becomes their turn. And again, I'd like to exploit that infrastructure to help decompress operations at the Health Department. We continue to work with Viden Health to coordinate vaccine of eligible groups. Workers progressing on a potential joint large scale vaccination clinic that would serve the general public. Our goal is to eventually have a joint site that could have a capacity in the range of 1,000 vaccinations a day. And we will continue that discussion. There's a meeting tomorrow night. I mean, it would be for the Board of Health meeting. I'm going to try to attend that, but if I don't, at least my staff will so that we can, we can continue discussions with them on that issue. Today, additional private providers were able to apply through the COVID Vaccine Management System Portal to become providers. New providers will not directly be supplied with COVID vaccine by the North Carolina Line of Department of Health and Human Services, but this will facilitate the transfer of available vaccine between providers. Expanding vaccine delivery, again, at present, there is not enough vaccine for every eligible candidate to receive the vaccine at the same time. We will continue to schedule clinics and provide clinics as vaccine becomes available to us. And again, as I stated last week, the burden of vaccination really must be spread across our medical infrastructure if we are to be successful in this vaccination campaign. Take a few minutes and review our Pitt County data for you. Let me show you where we were last week. This is some data I pulled together for my press conference on January 5th. At that point, we had had 1,800 cases over the last 14 days and we're averaging about 128 or 29 cases a day. Our active cases were 9.7 per thousand. That was increased. Our total cases were at 12,000 and change, which was 6.6% of the Pitt County residents. And our estimated recovery was at 10,316, which is about 85% of cases. Cumulative deaths were 69 and our case fatality rate was 0.6. It was starting to trend down in the unrounded numbers, but I report that to one figure as flu is reported to one figure like that. Our percentage of tests returning positive last Wednesday were 13.2. That was up three points from 10.2 the week before. Tonight, knowing that I will be in clinic all day, I apologize. These were the numbers available to me last night as I was working on this presentation. Our active cases last night were up to 2,155 over the past 14 days. That's an average of 153.9 or almost 154 cases per day. Our active cases per thousand were up to 11.6. That was increased over the previous week. Our total cases were, had reached 13,084, representing roughly 7.1% of Pitt County residents. Our estimated recovery, again, in excess of 10,000, 10,860, representing as a percentage slightly less in terms of 83%. That number tends to float in the mid, low 80s to mid 80s as a percentage. Fortunately, we have not added a fatal case or a death in the past two weeks. And as of last night, our deaths were stable at 69. Our case fatality rate as of last night had dropped to 0.5. In the unrounded number, it was 5.3 trending, still continuing to trend down. The range for that throughout the pandemic has been somewhere from 0.5 to 0.7. And our percentage of tests returning positive, excuse me, were up a little bit to 13.6, up from 13.2% the previous week. Like to show you the, some of the graphs. These are our epidemic curve as a bar graph going by week of reporting. And that salmon color or sort of a dull orange color is our cases that occur in congregate living centers, long-term care facilities. And as you can see, the last few weeks, we really have had no activity in these long-term care centers. That's really a success in terms of the testing protocols that are in place and the aggressive testing on the part of the long-term care facilities in both patients and staff, residents and staff, to try to keep these out of these facility. And at this time, we seem to be doing a good job of that across the county and really have almost no burden in our long-term care facility. So very vulnerable population, but appears that the testing and protective measures are working at this time. This is our epidemic curve by race and ethnicity. The redish bar at the bottom represents our African American residents. And recently, again, there's been a little dip in cases amongst African Americans. This sort of slate blue color in the middle represents cases among white individuals. That seems to be growing as time goes by. The sort of lavender color represents the portion of cases among our Hispanic or Latinx community. And there's been some growth, but again, it kind of goes up and down in that group overall, relatively stable. Our Asian community again represents a small, small portion of the graph. And there's this subset, sort of that khaki color that is the unknown or missing data. We don't always get race or ethnic data in the reports that come through. This looks at illness, again, the epidemic curve by age. We have seen this sort of yellowish bar at the bottom. We've seen some growth in our 0 to 17 age group, a little bit of a dip the week, the day after Christmas, the week after Christmas or week of Christmas, but that has come back up. And again, maybe a little bit taller than the previous week. Overall, that 17 and under group, when you look at the cumulative cases on the state website, we're still about 10%. So even though there's been some growth in this group recently on a week to week basis, as a percentage of total cases, it's about the same. The red are college age population, the 18 to 24 year old population. That has been relatively stable, maybe a slight increase in the past week. And then the biggest group that we have seen is in the young to middle aged working adults in that 25 to 49 year old group. And then with maybe a little bit of growth in the 50 to 64 year old age group as well. Our 75 and older age group has been very stable and runs about 5% of our cases. Unfortunately, the 75 and overage group accounts for about, accounts for in excess of 50% of our fatalities. This shows our percentage of positivity versus, versus time versus testing. This is the ECU spike of late August. You can see that we came down and we're in the, between the 5 and 10% raise at near the end of October, beginning of November, we began to climb a little bit of a plateau, but we're clearly climbing again as of last week in percent positivity. And then the last graph here, I believe this is, this is our estimated total number of tests per week. This sort of orangish line at the bottom is the 4,000 test line. The next test is the line is the 6,000 test line. And if we look from, from October 10th on, we have been north of 4,000 tests every week. From the week of November 21st, we have been north of 6,000 tests and some weeks we are even above 8,000 tests being run across the county. So testing is broadly available across the county. Many private medical offices are doing this now as well as the very large practices like Viden Medical Group, ECU physicians and Physicians East. Many of our urgent cares are doing testing. Excuse me, testing is broadly available in Pitt County as this graph attests to the numbers, numbers of tests being run across our community. Want to let you know that we are still looking at how do we make testing more available to our residents. The North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services considering providing another vendor operated test site in Pitt County. No clear option has been offered yet in reviewing potential options. Actually with Dr. Morrow, he's working on this project on the state end. Did request that the vendor provide weekend testing if at all possible. We know many times on Saturday and Sunday that individuals find it difficult to, to get a test done. And we would like to try to provide a testing option for individuals in Pitt County on the weekend. So we'll see, see what the state is able to do for us on that point going forward. The changing viral landscape, this is something that, that some of us are starting to look at and again, something we haven't talked about before. So I thought I would, would bring this to your attention this evening. You know, it really is becoming a question of is COVID changing the viral landscape, pushing other viruses out, at least for this season? And in fact, some of the normal seasonal viruses are currently missing in action. And to date, when we look at the viruses that are missing in action, a virus we call respiratory syncytial virus or RSV generally occurs in seasonal outbreaks from say early November through the end of December in young children. In adults, this is mostly an upper respiratory infection. In children, we do see some bronchitis, some bronchiolitis in small kids. Those are usually about a, about a year and a half old, bronchiolytic kids. And then we, we might even see an occasional pneumonia with this. Generally, it's a mild illness, but sometimes does produce hospitalizations in children. As of last week, there had not been a case of RSV reported through the VMC lab this season. So just completely missing in action. And then influenza, normally we see influenza growing, you know, from midfall through December with a peak that usually occurs for us about the second week in January. And so far this year, in the, looking at the viral surveillance that's done through the Viden Medical Center lab, we have had one PCR confirmed case of influenza A. So that's really, that's anomaly. It doesn't mean that influenza A is not out there, but predominantly what we are seeing in infections is COVID adenovirus, rhinovirus and a few less common viruses. But some of our normal big seasonal actors are missing in action this year. So that's good when you consider that there was, there were great concerns about influenza and COVID circulating at the same time. And it appears that influenza circulation has greatly, greatly decreased this season. So that's good news on one front. Want to talk about contact investigation and tracing. And I'm sorry if I'm a little long winded tonight. There's many facets to this response since this pandemic. And I wanted to make sure I hit things that we haven't hit before and things that are interest, of interest to you, the commissioners. So contact investigation and tracing, what has Pitt County Health Department done? Early on in this, we assigned a contact tracing lead, Toria Wilson, she's one of our DIS specialists, normally does things like viral hepatitis, syphilis, HIV, those sorts of things, has worked out very well in terms of leading this effort and coordinating this effort on our end. We did request search staff from the state. These come from Community Care of North Carolina or CCNC. We have requested and received staff from that for this effort. We worked with the ECU Student Health Service and their undergraduate Department of Public Health to develop a university based contact tracing team. We are in the process of supplementing that with some search staff from CCNC, which will give them access to NC COVID and help speed the entry of data into the state system. We've worked with Pitt County Schools extensively to develop internal contact tracing capabilities there. They have a coordinator, there's school nurses involved in this, and then they have hired some contract nurses to help with, with this process in the schools. And while they're busy, it has worked and, and has helped control COVID in the, in the Pitt County school system. Our health educators and myself and other staff have worked with many local businesses and other groups in how to manage exposures in the workplace. And, and this is kind of a triumph for, for health education, for public education. Their first case, they're very nervous and we walk, we walk them through it, we talk them through it. Their second case, they've got most of the stuff done when they call us and run it through us. And by the time they've got their third case in the workplace, they, they'll call us and say, hey, you know, we've got our third case. This is what we've done. Is there anything else? And usually there's not much else to do because they've learned how to manage this themselves. And, and again, that helps broaden our footprint and help us, helps us get our arms around this in different places. We've also worked across the other county departments to help manage exposures in Pitt County facilities and that has also been very successful. The state provided contact tracing tool, you might see that referred to as a CCTO tool, provides automated messaging at this time for cases and contacts that are entered into the system. At this point, we're averaging almost 154 cases per day and it is making contact investigation and tracing very difficult. The North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has provided guidance on how we should prioritize contact investigation and tracing in that load of cases that we are all seeing across the state. Interestingly, and this is, I don't have numbers to share with you tonight, but we've been very aggressive with our internal contact investigation and tracing. As you know, we've had a number of employees, several employees who have tested positive for COVID, who were in the Health Department during their period of communicability. We have not clearly had transmission in the workplace even before we were all masking. There is one instance where transmission may have occurred between two Pitt County Health Department employees, but the, the recipient in that chain potentially could have had contact outside of the Health Department as well. So if you were to ask me for a percentage, I'd say, yeah, 85% it happened at the Health Department, but maybe a 15% chance it happened somewhere else. So, so even being, sometimes being very, very aggressive in, in this contact tracing, we don't end up turning up positive contacts. Doesn't mean that we shouldn't isolate these or, excuse me, quarantine these folks. But so far, we really have had very limited internal transmission with, with our COVID positive employees. Want to just review a couple of our challenges briefly with you. Staffing remains a challenge for us. We must find a way to fill our vacant full-time equivalents. And this is incredibly difficult, given the calamity that we're in, the same people that we're looking for, everybody else is looking for. So, so it is, it is a challenge to fill vacancies in the Health Department right now. Contact or contract and volunteer staff are helping with our vaccine camp, campaign. And this has been a godsend. We had a number of contract and volunteer staff at our operations today and that allowed us to, to complete the vaccinations that we did. I'm exploring possibilities for a deputy medical director at minimal cost. There are some physicians already connected to county work that we may be able to tap into for this role at a minimal cost or perhaps even no cost to the county. The other issue that I think that you all need to understand is that many of us The other issue that I think that you all need to understand is that many of us, in fact, almost everybody at the health department provides multiple roles. Many staff function in multiple roles on a day to day basis. In normal times, this is generally acceptable. In in COVID times, some days this is nearly impossible. If any of you send me emails or left me messages today, voice messages today, I have not had opportunity to return those because I was in clinic until about quarter after five and then scooted home to get on this meeting. So I will get back to you. But again, wearing multiple hats is challenging in COVID time. I thank you for your attention. I'm sorry to be so long winded tonight, and I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Similier, and I believe we have a hand Commissioner Nunnely.
Dear woman, Huggins, can can I suggest come back a couple of comments just to follow up on? It may help to answer some questions that may come up otherwise.
All right.
Don't want to steal any thunder from Dr. Silvernell or anything, but just in terms of the joint meeting we held Friday between the Board of Health and Board of Commissioners, obviously, there are some suggestions in there that seem to be vetted by both boards on the the call-in system, reservation system. We're in the process of trying to set up that follow-up meeting for Dr. Silvernell, myself, the county attorney, and probably his deputy director to talk about that, to to find out the ins and outs of that. And I believe that we tried doing that today, but as the doctor said, he had to be in clinical day. So I think we're going to meet Wednesday, but we're going to vet that out. We have, over the weekend, we had communication back and forth that was positive and good. We're working with public health in terms of their needs on space for the volume of people calling in, seeking information. We have now set up the EOC ready for them to to occupy a bigger space, more phones. We have, I know my office is county manager, the county attorney is legal, have, we have dedicated staff to to assist them in taking those calls more on the administrative level to help with that call volume. And Dr. Silvernell was telling us this weekend about some of the initial, well, ongoing discussions with Biden Health about the large volume site for for the testing. And that will be, as my understanding and in talking to the officials at the hospital, a an appointment only type site. If they get it up and operating, depending upon the supply of vaccine, as even Dr. Silvernell had alluded, would not be a walk-up site, but they are trying to get that in. And that is in partnership with with public health, Dr. Silvernell, and trying to work out the details on that at this time. But just want to kind of add that. I don't know if Dr. Silvernell, I know there were questions about the reservation system. I don't know if if this is really the the right venue to to vet that, but I'm sure that's probably on the the minds of some of the commissioners.
Sure. We are looking at that, working on that. Our our meeting ended almost at five o'clock on Thursday. We were working very hard to get this operation up and running for for today and make that successful. We're going to regroup and work on that so that we can try to take reservations. Part of that is in process in terms of having the call center moved, part of the call center moved to the EOC so that people can call in and get on a a reservation list. There are some counties that have had both their phone and email systems crashed by the call volume that has come in in terms of people trying to make appointments. So we didn't want to cripple the county by by taking down the phone system or the email system. We want to, so we are working with our our internal partners in in the IT department to to get that done so that we don't crash our county communication system.
So that is in process.
It is, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Nunnely, you have a question?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Janice, a lot, a lot of information, I think, speak probably for a number of folks in the community. What I've been hearing from everyone, it's been a long journey, but what's on everyone's mind right now is how can I get on a schedule to receive the vaccine? Everyone understands the demand issues. Everyone understands the challenges of, you know, needle to arms. What I'm having a difficult time understanding, and I think members of the community are having a difficult time understanding, is that we've seen this coming for months. And and it seems as if we're fumbling here in the moment where we need to be able to take, take a call, take someone's name, take their address, and get them on a list, especially with this at-risk group who's not perhaps as technologically savvy, and what we don't need is this group calling our public health department, who ought to be the tip of the spear. And hopefully you have the Band-Aid from both your your management body and hopefully from our body. But to be the tip of the spear, to not only be the the entity providing the information that our community so desperately needs, but also a place where when they call in that seventy-five and older group, that they call that they, if someone's not there, they hear a message with something regarding COVID. And that's not happening right now. That they call and that there's, it sounds like it's in the works, but they call and there's someone on the other end of the line that can talk to them and put them on a list. Sounds like we're making a little bit more work for ourselves by not being prepared in the first instance to take and receive these seemingly. There's a lot of twenty-first century technology involved with 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 a vaccine. But picking up a phone, taking a reservation, something that's been done for hundreds of years. And I just, I'm real, I I'm frustrated, think the public's frustrated that we don't have something in place right now. And and I and I'm not satisfied. I I get that it's hard, but I'm not satisfied with with called the county health department this afternoon right before our meeting, and I still got a voicemail, not not a lick of information about anything regarding how we're going to get on a list or any reservation system. So we need to do a better job, and and I still haven't heard what's going to get us there. And so maybe you can speak to that a little bit more directly.
Yes, Commissioner, I I understand that. I understand the community's frustration. We were not anticipating being in this phase until early February. I will say, one of the difficulties in trying to plan this operation was knowing which vaccine we were going to get, how much we were going to get, when we were going to get it. You're right, a scheduling system is there. We do have a scheduling system in our electronic health record, but we cannot use that because it doesn't link to the state's vaccine management system. So we would do this, have to do this at this time on paper or maybe an Excel spreadsheet. And again, we're all wearing multiple hats and doing multiple things. I know that's maybe not an acceptable answer. We are working to fix this, and we will have something up this week.
So so can we help? Can the county help? It sounds like we're maybe going to with the with the emergency manager center, but but can we partner and help assist you so that we can bolster this effort? Again, I think that it was communicated relatively clearly that we want to be in a position to help and assist you any way we can. We don't want to be in your way. Same time, it's a heavy lift, and so we need all hands on deck. And if it's not weak for the health department to ask us to get involved to do admin, in my view, anyway. And if that's necessary, I think we need to do it, and we need to do it not yesterday, but right away.
Yeah.
Or yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, both both Scott and and Janice have offered a staff that formerly worked at the health department, and I believe we're going to place them in in this process in terms of of getting folks on a list for the vaccine. As I said, we just did not want to crash our county phone system with that with that process.
Well.
Well, Dr. Similier, you said this is going to happen this week. Do you have an idea the day, what day it will happen?
I'm not sure, but I would think by the middle of week, by Wednesday or Thursday, we would have something up and running. Again, we need to regroup after our operation today. Many of our staff were engaged in in the operation at the Ag Center today, and then we had other staff engaged at the health department, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Perkins Williams, Commissioner Perkins Williams, I believe your hand is next. Commissioner Perkins Williams?
You're still muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Similier, for your thorough presentation. When it comes down to the call center, you know, on Thursday, we talked about the technical person. I can recall ECU having a a phone bank set up in the original, the regional facility down on the Broad Street when they make those promotional calls about coming to ECU. So you might want to contact someone with the university about that. It's a large volumes of call, and one call roll from one phone to the next phone to the next phone. And they, those phones are connected for coordination. I just happen to remember that from today. Now, that was back in the day, so they ought to have something more sophisticated now. But in addition to that, I would like to know, do you have a projected number of vaccine that will be coming that you expect in your next expect shipment? Do you know how many? They probably will tell you, because on other meetings that I'm in, people getting ideas to how many are coming.
We were told we would receive six hundred this week. We anticipated they would come today. They have not arrived today. We were told our allotment for this week was six hundred.
Is that allotment your Pitt County Health Department or is it Pitt County slash Ag Vida?
No, that is, that is what will come to Pitt County Health Department. Vida gets a separate allocation of its own.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. And I I placed a a site on the door of on O River Road as to how people can access information related to COVID right here in Pitt County. And not only do I have your number on there, I hope, I have the Pitt County Government site because some of this has to do with social services and LEAP and all that. They want to know more about that than anything else right now. And so I have those things published. Matter of fact, people were worried about that posting, thinking I was sick. I'm all right, but it it is for the general public to be able to access information that we walk around with in our heads. I I would like to know, Dr. Silvernell, when you get an opportunity, when people are able to contact or Vida.
To contact Vida?
Depending the way the circumstances for some families.
I'm not sure I understand the question, Commissioner. Vida does, they do have a COVID hotline of their own.
Okay.
I don't know that number off the top of my head, but they do have a COVID hotline of their own that offers assistance to individual individuals. I will mention that the hospital also began scheduling the seventy-five and older group in their one B group one clinic and and conducted some of those vaccines today. I do not know how many they did.
Okay, thank you very much. I was, I was just wondering about that. Some people are skeptical as to where or who they may get their vaccine from. That's, that's what I was saying. The phobies are out there, and some people are skeptical. That's, that's what I wanted to say. When you're looking at a community giving the shots, that's where the skepticism may come in as to who's giving and in the contentious of the giver as to whether or not people may be willing to take. I'm trying to say something without saying outright, but the skepticism does come into play.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Commissioner McGlaughlin?
Think you meet it again.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Silvernell, I think that you and I talked a little bit about this. I had on the day after we announced the availability of the vaccine for seventy-five years and older. Several black communities, organization called me and said that none of the citizen was able to get on the list for for vaccines. And that was the day after you announced it. And you, as you well know, there there has been some skepticism, I think. Commissioner Perkins Williams alluded to that in the in the community, in the community, black community, because of this Tuskegee problem that we had years ago. And now that that they are trying to, I think they are more willing to take this vaccine, but we have to. But they they weren't able to get it. My question to you, do you have any idea of that two hundred twenty-four doses, two hundred twenty-eight doses? I forget the exact number. How many of those were black that received the vaccine for seventy-five years and older? Do you have a record of that?
I I do not have those numbers available to me now. I will say that there were African American individuals who came in to get vaccine today. The numbers were relatively small in comparison to the numbers of whites who got the vaccine today. I'm not sure why that is in in this setting. I did have a phone conversation with Kelvin Henderson from the NAACP over the weekend. And as we go forward, he has agreed to help us promote this in the African American community so that when we announce for the next clinics, which will likely happen next week, there will be time for people to get on that list from from the African American community specifically. We're also working on some PSAs going forward to help promote the vaccine to the African American community and other communities of color in Pitt County.
Right. I I think now that there seems to be more willingness to to get the vaccine than I really anticipated. My phone has been, you know, ringing off the hook in terms of people willing, and that's a good thing. But we just want to make sure that that happens. And somewhat into, in 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 reference to what Commissioner Nunnely was talking about, it's sort of frustrating in terms of, you know, we got that willingness, but they can't get it in arm. So I think we need to certainly work on that and and in a way that we can be proactive and and moving, you know, faster with this. But thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And I I certainly echo the comments from previous speakers about the the pressing need to to get answers when people call the health department and hear relevant information about how to proceed. And I hope that will happen tomorrow, that something will be on that answer machine. It's distressing to hear that people are calling and, you know, we're getting the calls and saying, you know, what's what we've already heard. I appreciate the the educational session here, Dr. Silvernell. I learned a lot about vaccines and and the whole process. I congratulate you again on the testing successes. I fear that that that's about the only success that we're really hearing here. And my my, I'm talking not your, your, it has nothing to do with you. It has to do with the availability of the vaccine. And where you've exhausted your supply today, and that's for the week, and you're looking for six hundred possibly for next week. And we're looking at a population of possibly nine thousand people over seventy-five who need this vaccine. And I have, in some ways, find it hard to believe that you can come before us with a positive attitude, looking at this this very daunting prospect that you must feel that you and your department are facing in terms of this crisis and our nation's inability to distribute the vaccine to this county and and to the other side. I do appreciate what you're going through with all that. I wonder if you have any idea how you might, and and I don't want to guess, a a a hope, but do you have an idea of when we might get to a thousand doses a day? Has there been any indication of the ramping up of the delivery of these vaccines so that we could get to that that very noble goal that you have?
I know Vida, Vida has a direct connection, and let me, let me preface that by saying I don't speak for Vida, Commissioner. But it, over the weekend and late Friday, Friday evening, had a conversation with one of the VPs of Vida, who's working on that project. And they seem to have a direct connection to the the Secretary of Health and Human Services. And the idea, the the State Department of Health and Human Services likes the idea of a a large vaccine center and may be willing to push that supply to Vida to help provide vaccine for that. uh and may be willing to push that supply to Biden to help provide vaccine for that center. Uh we would probably assist with the staffing of that center uh with the, with the volunteer base that we're developing and able to draw from. They um struggle with having enough vaccinators because most of their clinical staff are working in clinics in the hospital and things like that. Uh where now that we have some volunteer and contract staff, we'd be able to move or shift some of that to that vaccine center to help with administrations there. Uh the other thought with that center is to wrap on some much-needed preventive health services, health screenings. And since we've got to essentially keep these folks occupied for fifteen to thirty minutes after their vaccination to have a essentially a socially-distanced health fair on the backside of this to um to address some of these much-needed preventative health and health screening issues uh as at the back door of the clinic as people move through this vaccine process uh as the center develops. Uh I would hope to see that come. My contact gave me a very optimistic date. Uh I don't know if I believe that date yet, so I don't, I don't necessarily want to repeat that date, but I would like to think that maybe in the next two weeks that something like that could be stood up.
Thank you. That that's very helpful and very helpful. Uh uh thank you. Can you comment on, you know, there was a a really informational uh meeting that we had la- last week with with the Board of Health? And I appreciate all the information that we heard there. Um I haven't heard a lot of discussion about, I think was the ratio that we came up at that meeting where Biden controls sixty percent of the vaccines coming into the county and Pitt County controls six hundred. And I haven't heard a lot of discussion about that nine thousand number that the county is responsible for uh treating. And I'm I'm asking if you might comment, and maybe you wouldn't, wouldn't want to, but on the uh um it seems like uh if you have a contact at Biden, that you might be better off um going through Biden to get a vaccine um at 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 this point instead of uh trying to get on a list with the county.
Again, Commissioner, I'm not sure how they're scheduling folks for their seventy-five and over clinic. I know several individuals have told me they've received outreach calls from the hospital in regards to scheduling. Um uh they, since they have a larger supply than we are, they are working uh again through this, this vaccine coordinating group essentially that we've created between the two entities and some of the larger medical practices. And it's sort of shaping out that they will help the larger practices like ECU physicians in terms of getting their staff and helping ECU student health services to eventually get to the health science students uh through student health services. And then we are working with the smaller uh private practices. With one exception, Physicians East, we've done a lot of vaccinations for Physicians East staff at the Health Department uh to get these groups covered. And then we will, because we do have a very large population of one A, the healthcare providers uh still to complete in Pitt County, looking at that vaccine distribution that we get, probably splitting that down the middle with half going to one A and half going to one B. So that we can continue that group. Um and we know that these first few weeks or or months maybe, maybe lean in vaccine and high in demand, but but hopefully as we get towards the um, you know, the end of March, maybe sooner, uh we will have larger supplies of vaccine available. Uh and again, being able to spread that across the the medical community for for administration.
Thank you. That that that's helpful. I I appreciate that. And again, I I very much appreciate your uh work with with Biden in in this crisis. My last question, and this is a little bit off off topic here, but it's a part of the hat that you're uh wearing, I guess, is the, in vaccinations in general. What's going on with the schools vaccinations and what we hear about uh students being uh uh, I think our clock has run out on some of those school vaccinations?
Yes, that was um during the fall, um uh we ran immunization clinics for Pitt County School students uh to try to get them caught up on vaccines. We know that that many of our uh Pitt County School students were delinquent on vaccines or behind on vaccines. Um many of the younger age groups that go into kindergarten have got to have a physical uh other age groups, they other years they need a, you know, a school assessment, health assessment. And we were trying to catch those up for the students when the state extended it. It was good because there were still kids who didn't, hadn't received their vaccines or had their well-child assessment. But what we find is when you take the pressure off the parents by giving them an extension, the um the clinics dry up. And when that information got out, uh the attendance at our vaccine clinics plummeted because they uh with the date being moved to December first and then a thirty-day grace period, it moved it to December thirty-first. The last report that I heard, and that was in the media, was that there are approximately four hundred Pitt County School uh students who are uh at this point uh delinquent and ineligible for school because of their vaccination status.
So what happens with those students? Is there follow-up to try to uh um to get them vaccinated? Uh they've just been taken out of our school system?
I would need to confirm that number with the school district commissioner, but yeah, I believe that if they are, if they're delinquent in their vaccinations at this time, they're not even being allowed to participate virtually. Um and that's the
Do you know if there's follow-up with them uh um to to try to get them into the the folder of vaccinated?
The the school districts did. I I spoke with um all of the large pediatric practices in the county and and urged them to um uh to reach out to their patient base and get these children in for immunizations and well-child checks. Um with one exception, there's uh was a pirate pediatrics. I don't think I ever spoke to anyone at pirate pediatrics, but the other big groups. I spoke directly with those individuals. Um we, um as I said, we conducted the clinics, the vaccine clinics at the Health Department uh by appointment only because uh again, some of these children were eligible for what we call vaccine for children, which are free. Some of them were were private. It had to be billed to insurance. Um and then there was a mix of immunizations that were required for these, these kids, some of which are are provided as frozen vaccines and have to be thawed for administration. So there are some technical challenges to do in that, in a, in in just a walk-up model. We tried to to plan for that, again, to minimize vaccine waste and and ensure a um a service that was user-friendly to people uh coming for their vaccination, so they didn't have an excessive wait time.
Thank you for the response and uh uh thank you again for for your uh 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 courage and and plowing through this with all the other things that are going on um in addition to COVID and that that kind of thing like that is is just really, seems really daunting for
I I will, I will say the school nurses, which the, you know, the school nurse program is a, is a joint program. Uh the Health Department funds some of that through a a grant that we get. It's called the School Nurse Funding Initiative. And we pass that money to Biden. Biden actually hires and manages the school nurses. Uh Biden kicks in some as part of its use agreement for the, what was Pitt County Hospital. Uh Pitt County Memorial Hospital, now now Biden Medical Center. And then the school district itself kicks in some money to help hire the the school nurses. Uh Biden plays the coordinating role. Uh Dr. Felicia Mosley-Williams is the the nurse director of that program over the school nurses. And then I am the medical director for the school nurses um uh by default, I guess, or or by by organization. And so our our school nurses do reach out to these children as well, let us go home from the school regarding what they're delinquent on. Um and then we've tried to get it from the pediatrician's end as well, and and we we advertised into the clinics in the fall.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Silver, do you think uh because a lot of the students um in virtual that this is why they feel like they don't have to have the uh the vaccinations?
That may be part of it, Commissioner, or Madam Chair. I I think um I do believe, and I'd have to confirm that, that even if they're in virtual uh school, if they're delinquent, I think they are, they are um uh ineligible uh at that time. Um even though you can't transmit the virus through a virtual meeting, uh I believe as as an enforcement tool there uh not expelled but suspended is the, I believe is the right word, even if they are in virtual.
Yeah, but I I think the parents still may look at it as, you know, they're not in school. So why are you requiring this of me?
Yeah, I I think there's probably some of that out there that, well, you're doing school from the kitchen table or the, you know, uh the coffee table in the living room, so why, why do you need to have your vaccine now if if you're not interacting with others, other children? And I believe that is part of it.
I I too want to say that that uh I'm glad that we don't have a lot of flu out here in in the mix with the uh COVID. You know, that's a good thing, as you said. Uh and all these other uh um viruses uh that are missing. That's good. That's a good thing.
Yeah, there is some good news in this, at least.
Yeah. Alright, thank you, Dr. Silvernail. And if there are no other questions for him. I don't see any more hands, so we're gonna move to uh Pitt County Social Service, Jan Elliott. Thank you again, Dr. Silvernail.
You're welcome, Madam Chair.
Good evening. I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. So thank you all for having me this evening, and I want to say to Dr. Silvernail, he is my hero. I am so glad I'm not sitting where he's sitting right now. Uh but uh I I do appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening uh and and participate with you uh and allow me to share kind of what's been going on with social services. I know all of you did receive uh printed report, and I'm actually not going to spend a lot of time on that printed report. I'm going to talk about some other things that relate to what's been going on this year. Um so um first and foremost, um I want to um say one of the exciting things that happened for us this year was the hiring of a new deputy director. Um as many of you know, our deputy, Gwen Burns, retired last January, and we have spent uh some time looking for a new deputy, and I kept hoping I could bring him to a commissioner meeting, but I have sort of given up on that. This is, this is the commissioner meeting of the of the current time. So I wanted to take a moment to introduce our deputy. He was hired in May. He started work in July. He is uh supposed to be on the phone right or in the, in the meeting right now, Dr. Augustine Frazier. Uh Dr. Frazier comes to us from the DC area. Uh he's been involved a lot with our homeless populations in DC and working with those kinds of things and other social areas in the DC area. Uh he's worked many years for Catholic charities. Uh he has experience in child welfare from the state of Maryland. Uh and so I wanted to give you a moment to meet him and certainly give him the opportunity to say hello.
Hello, I'm very happy to be here.
So, so
Well, thank you and welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner.
Yeah, I told him he couldn't talk very long, because I know y'all are ready to get, get, get through with this, so. But do take the opportunity to give him a call if you see him or whatever. Uh we're, we're excited to have him and and he's um gonna do a great job for us. So um let me see now if I can pull off the share screen activity and I'll give you our, our report. Here you go, and see if I can get the slideshow going. So here we go. Um the, we had great hopes here in Pitt County DSS for this year. Uh we had a, a lot of new initiatives going on in the agency and in the community. Uh COVID hit, and then we had to suddenly rethink life. Um and so tonight, we're going to talk about some of the things that we did uh in the process. Uh some of the impacts on the community and and probably a dab on uh where we still continue to struggle. So um a- as I said, it's changed a lot of how we operate. Uh we've had to get creative, and here's one example of the creativity. Uh this is a scene from our foster parent appreciation uh dinner. Uh we got creative. Uh we did a drive-by appreciation with goodies and and a meal and and all kinds of things that the foster parents could then take home. And so again, we're, we're trying really hard to think about different ways to do business today and still uh give recognition to folks and and still meet the needs of the community. So not only did we need PPE, everything in the agency went remote as best we could. Took us a while to figure all of that out. Uh foster parent training, for example, how we could do child and family team meetings. Visits foster parent, I mean, our our parents and our children visiting uh court functions. All of this kind of, you know, had to get figured out. All of our application processes for public assistance. So a a whole lot went into trying to uh balance staff safety, meet our legal mandates and meet our client needs. Uh the state was very helpful. They worked with our federal partners to get a lot of waivers. Uh one of those, for example, was to waive face-to-face interviews for our public assistance programs. So that way we could do things more on the phone and by mail and by email and and through the e-Pass portal so that folks didn't have to come in and our staff um were able to continue to work without as much exposure. Uh we really focused a lot on food security because we knew that food, food security was going to be an issue. Uh we already had a large number of households in Pitt County receiving food stamps. Um and and with folks um going out, you know, losing their jobs, uh how were we going to to take care of their families? Um so one of the things that the state was able to do uh was to uh get a waiver to allow us to supplement uh the amount of food stamps folks receive so that they got the maximum allotment, no matter what their income was. Uh and you can see that our food stamp caseload has jumped by now about nineteen percent to more than sixteen thousand households here in the county. So through that supplemental, we got eighteen million dollars. Then the the free lunch. We're very concerned about school-aged children and the fact that they weren't going to school and how are they going to get fed? And obviously, the school system did a fabulous job in trying to get food to children. But in addition, the state participated in a P EBT, pandemic EBT program. So that all the children in schools that were getting free or reduced-price lunches uh were able to get a food stamp allotment uh and a, and a card if they weren't already getting food stamps with that allotment loaded on there. Uh and and like I say, roughly over a period of several months, about seven million dollars was used to help those children. Uh there is some conversation about whether that will happen again since we're back and forth into remote learning and it's, it's more complicated than it was in the spring where kids were literally out of school for the whole time. DSS in in the state worked with Foodline and a private fund or a a donation uh to have what they called a healthy living program uh which allowed families own food stamps who were with food, with Foodline uh and their MVP card to get additional fruits and vegetables in addition to what their food stamps normally provided. Uh it, so it gave them an extra thirty dollars a month in benefits. And so that was something that was really helpful for families for that three months. And we were able to get three hundred families enrolled in that program because it was a very short turnaround time to do that. So we were pleased to have that happen. We certainly worked a lot with housing security, primarily for us. We don't do as much with rental assistance until we get this grant up and running, but we do a lot with um heating and cooling. Uh electricity, uh all those kinds of things that connect to heating and cooling. And so a a lot of work, a lot of contact with our crisis intervention uh applications. Our low-income energy assistance program, uh we've seen an uptick there significantly. Uh in fact, those folks who got low-income energy assistance last winter uh this, early this summer, the state was able with the CARES Act to give them additional supplemental money to help with their utility payments. And so we had two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four households here in Pitt County that got that money. We are very anxious to get started with our grant for preventing evictions and utility disconnections. Uh thus far, we still have not received uh those funds in place yet. So uh we are, we are gearing up. We're trying to recruit the staff. Uh we're, we're working very much towards getting ready to go as soon as the uh state tells us we can do that. Healthcare, I mean, certainly healthcare is a big issue. Um and and so you've seen a tremendous uptick in our Medicaid population. Uh and it's been mostly in the family and children's Medicaid. Uh there are lots of reasons for that. Um obviously, people losing health coverage when they lost their jobs. Uh the, one of the big things, however, is that one of the waivers we got, as long as we are in uh the state of emergency, uh we cannot terminate anybody from Medicaid. And so those folks, as we do reviews that would normally come off Medicaid, uh they're getting to stay on as long as we're in the state of emergency. Um so, so the only way now people leave Medicaid would be to die or move out of state. So uh you're seeing the growth in that Medicaid program because of that. Additionally, you know, you're seeing it because people lost their jobs and a lot of other reasons, but did, did want to make that point uh to you about what's going on there. So a lot more folks, a lot more reviews to be done, a lot more applications being done. We continue to have our jobs that we normally do. Um we have never stopped going to client homes. We've never stopped going into the facilities. Uh we've never stopped with our CPS, APS, foster care, guardianship. None of those things have stopped. Our folks have been doing the job pretty much as they have always done the job, but they're doing it with a, with a cloth mask. Our folks have been doing the job pretty much as they have always done the job, but they're doing it with a, with a cloth mask and uh, sanitizer. Uh, they're trying to uh, do all the things that they've been trained to do, you know, weight, uh, six feet. Uh, you know, all those kinds of things. Um, so it's, it's been a, a real challenge for our folks uh, to, to do all the things that they need to do and make sure that they uh, stay safe. Uh, we have been into homes uh, where we know there were COVID-positive people. We have transported uh, families, children, adults. Uh, some of those, we've been transporting them to COVID test sites. So um, our, our folks um, are right there in the middle of all this. Uh, we did try to adapt our parent-child visitation procedures to do as much of it virtually. Parents had to agree, the courts had to agree. Uh, so there was a, a lot of work there. Uh, we did uh, more recently get back into face-to-face visits, but with the uptick, we probably are gonna try and work to go back to virtual for that. We have done what we could to accommodate, uh, accommodate court closures or, or court. The court's been reducing the number of folks in, in court at, at any point in time. Uh, but we have done the work of adoptions and other kinds of things as we've gone through that process. Uh, we did for a while facilitate monthly supplemental payments to foster homes, about a hundred dollars a month. I think it was for about four or five months. This was from the CARES money. Uh, and this was something that the state used the CARES money for. Uh, the county, when I, every time I talk about uh, writing checks, the, the county finance off, county, county finance office has been doing that for us. Uh, so they've been very involved. Uh, our staff uh, uh, helped with our adult wards and we have about a hundred and eighty of those. Actually did the applications for the stimulus payments for those folks and then they had to help manage those, how they use those payments. Christmas this year was fantastic and I've just gotta tell you, I think everybody in the county uh, wanted to do something positive this year. And so we had more folks step up to provide Christmas for those children being served by our child welfare and for those folks in the adult services realm that we provide uh, service, um, Christmas to. And so, you know, I just, I just need to say, it was a fantastic uh, Christmas year this year. We've never seen one like it. Um, and, and you know, and here's an example, Warehouser donated seven thousand dollars uh, to our foster care uh, fund. Um, many others, Great Harvest Bread, Bridges, which is a, a nonprofit that's working with foster children churches. Private individuals really reached out and, and, and gave this year a bit, in, in a big way. Uh, and so why I say that, let me also say that we owe a lot to other departments here in Pitt County. Uh, emergency management got us our first PPE. Uh, county finance, like I said, has been writing checks like crazy for us. Buildings and grounds built those Plexiglas shields that a lot of our staff are using. The health department, like I said, John is my hero. I, I contact him regularly to help me work through and think through what needs to be done in a staff situation. We even had community folks bring us cookies one day. So again, uh, lots of folks have been reaching out and, and been taking care of us as we have gone, gone forward. And so I don't want to um, not recognize that. Uh, we have done a lot also to support our staff members. Um, we have um, roughly eighty-nine percent of our staff had to have coordinate childcare because we had school closures. We had um, the remote learning. We've had daycare closures. So we had to work through that with, with that, that group of staff. We've had more than a hundred staff in quarantine at some point. I can say like Dr. Silvernell said, I don't believe I have been able to trace a single positive case to a, a work uh, infection. Now, those hundred staff that have been placed in quarantine were basically waiting for test results, had family members, whatever. We have not had that many clearly to test positive for COVID. We've probably had ten or fifteen. Um, we have um, another thirteen staff members over a period of time that had special work accommodations because of COVID. So juggling staff and making sure that we can still get our work done uh, with all those kinds of things has been a challenge. Uh, and, and you know, staff, staff are struggling um, to get the job done, to be at work. They really committed. Uh, but they have all these other things going on in their lives right now. We have also continued to certainly to be very responsible uh, for the, the money of the folks here that we serve. Um, and you know, we've said this before, um, about a third of a billion dollars of spending in tax dollars uh, comes through in one fashion or another, the social services department. Uh, child support, that sixteen million is actually generated through the non-custodial parents. But the rest of this is, is, is money from the federal state and county. And about three cents of every dollar uh, that we uh, provide in the way of services does come from the county taxes, sales tax and property tax. So um, wanted to, to share that with you certainly. The last twelve to eighteen months have still continued to see agency accomplishments in foster care and early education and, and our other programs. Um, we can say that um, we've seen a dramatic increase initially in foster care. In twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, we got up over two hundred and twelve, two hundred and fifteen children. We have now declined uh, and are now sort of in the same uh, space as the state and actually a little bit below the state when you look at the number of foster children per po- ten thousand in the population. Uh, we're now at around a hundred and eighty-two children in foster care. That is not counting our eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds. And I can say there are several things. One, some of the, the programs that we put in place has helped do that. And the other thing has been the staffing that y'all provided uh, to the foster care unit, which has helped them be able to actually do the job they needed to do. As far as our childcare programs, uh, you can see that we have increased the number of children enrolled in childcare. And you can see that our waitlist has declined from year to year. Uh, we certainly are moving more in the line of where the state is. We obviously need a lot more money to support all these young folk waiting at the waitlist. And clearly uh, childcare funding is one of the blocks that parents need uh, to be able to get into work. It's just critical for working parents to have good quality childcare that they can afford uh, in order to go to work. I already mentioned that our food and nutrition program, our food stamp program has gone up sharply. Um, some of this is, is where we're talking right now because this is through September of two thousand twenty. Um, but we still are way above the state level and I think that in part has to do with the fact that we uh, have a lot of poverty here in Pitt County. We've talked about that before. And again, uh, we have a lot of service jobs and I think those two things perhaps uh, drive that uh, a little more than, than what the state as a whole is seeing. Our Medicaid, as I said, has significantly increased and it's growing much faster than the state as a whole. Uh, virtually all of our growth, as you can see in this yellow bar, has been in children's Medicaid. Um, and as you see, we have the fourth highest growth of all one hundred counties. Um, and I can say, because our board asked this question, so I'm sure you will. Those three counties that are higher than us are Swain, Cumberland and Cleveland. Um, so we, we have a lot, a lot going on there. I think again, poverty is a driver. Uh, certainly we have um, uh, you know, no terminations right now, which I think is impacting that some. We have a really strong outreach program with a lot of the different agencies in the county and the, and the various medical providers. And I think, you know, we have a lot of access to care here, which may uh, encourage folks to, to apply and, and get that service that they can reach out to and get. So here you see at the state level, you're looking statewide, it's thirty-one percent growth, again fifty-two percent growth for Pitt County. Uh, and could act, you know, obviously we're getting ready to move into Medicaid transformation and so that's gonna make it um, a challenge, a, a real interesting scenario as we go forward. Um, so where are we for the new year? The big, some of the big things that are gonna be going on in the new year include Medicaid transformation. Uh, all the Medicaid, well, all of the standard Medicaid population, not those folks that are in behavioral health, but the basic standard Medicaid population will start enrolling with the prepaid health plan starting in March. And starting July one, they will all be enrolled in those prepaid health plans. And so the, the, we will no longer be in a fee-for-service environment and so it's gonna look really different. How we support the community's recovery from COVID-nineteen, we certainly with our programs will be doing some of that. Uh, we are going to continue to implement the trauma-informed practices uh, that we have here in the agency. We are moving very strongly in that direction to try and support our children who are coming into care or even the children in the community with the trauma they're experiencing. And we are continuing to expand our employment services to non-custodial parents who pay child support. They need a job in order to pay child support. And so that certainly is very much on our minds uh, as a way to support our families. So, and for those of you who came to graduation this spring, uh, these were our foster children uh, who graduated from high school and, and many of them moved on to college, community college and jobs. And so we were so proud of them. And so we continue to clearly uh, uh, adapt our operations to what's going on in the, in Pitt County at this point. And so I will stop here and see what kinds of questions you might have.
Well, first of all, Jan, we wanna thank you for that fine uh, report and we wanna thank the staff for all the uh, hard work they do uh, to take care of our children uh, and uh, in, in Pitt County, especially our children and of course our elderly. I don't see any hands, uh, so that means that uh, everybody's happy.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening.
All right, you too. Um, next we will, uh, I believe we have uh, manuals, managers' report.
Thank you, Chairwoman Lloyd Huggins. So yes, couple, couple things real quick. Next meeting dates. Month of February, your meeting dates are the first and the fifteenth, six o'clock at night for each meeting. You do have on January twenty-fifth, which is a Monday, your annual capital budget work, budgeting workshop that'll begin at um, eight-thirty in the morning. Um, the third item on the list is in your weekly info packet that is printed and distributed. You received a copy of the chairwoman's appointment list for the appointments she makes for the um, calendar year twenty-twenty. That has been distributed and those appointments have been made. Item D on the list, just wanted to um, bring back to the board's attention and also maybe make more of a public announcement regarding the Pitt County Animal Shelter. And um, obviously that is a project that we embarked upon um, probably two years ago, plus or minus, get halted. We are, are needing, in desperate need to um, embark upon the remaining phases of this, of the project, phases two, three and four. And are gonna proceed with a, a bid process, working with the um, animal shelter architect and county staff to get that bid on, out on the streets and then bring back options for the board to consider for awarding the bid to complete that project. Um, just three other things real quick. They're not on, on your agenda. One being a follow-up to your last board meeting regarding the ABC property in Bethel. Um, we have at this point, um, through the county attorney's office have effectuated the deed transfer from the ABC Board to Pitt County Government that was filed first of this, this month. An assignment of the lease from, for the um, Center for Science, Technology and Leadership Development has been signed by ABC Board Chair and um, Dr. Gary Moore with the um, the, the entity. And we have done all the internal um, signatures and routing within, within our organization and now that has been effectuated. The last step where we need some board input on is um, the transferring of the property from Pitt County Government to the um, Center for Science, Technology and Leadership Development. Um, Janice Gallagher in the last meeting gave you two options to consider. Um, one would be to go through an upset bid process where we would um, advertise the property for sale. Anybody could bid on the property through an upset bid process. So obviously Dr. Moore's entity is nonprofit, would in that scenario, would want to bid on the property and hopefully come in at, at a price that they could um, afford to acquire the property. If that process is done, they would then receive the property fee simple, no strings attached back to the county. The county would have no strings attached back to, to the nonprofit. The other option that was pointed out was to um, do a um, Janice, help me here, a process in which a nonprofit could be, that the property could be deeded to the nonprofit for this nonprofit use as an educational uh, facility. But at some point in time, if they cease to use it for that purpose that they're eligible to receive it, then the property would come back to Pitt County Government. Thus, we could inherit a piece of property years down the line that um, may be in, in very good shape or it may, may not be in good shape. Um, the, the cleanest transaction would be the fee simple, the straight, where it goes to the, the entity without the risk of it coming back to the county. But I'm gonna present those two options. And Janice, you wanna add anything to that?
Um, no, I think you covered it well. The second option is under one sixty-eight, two seventy-nine and it requires, it does not require an upset bid process, but if you're giving to a nonprofit, you have to include covenants within the deed that require that the property be used for a public purpose. So, and if it ceases to be used as a public purpose, then it's a violation of this deed covenant. And the easiest way to enforce that is to build in a reversion back to the county, should it not be used for public purposes. Um, and that's the condition that must be attached if you are going to avoid an upset bid process open to the public. Either method is legally acceptable.
So tonight you could do one of two things. One, you could direct us which method you prefer or you could receive this as information, put it on, back on the agenda for um, February first for a formal decision of the board. It's really up to you. Um, the, the lease assignment is in place, so we own the property, Pitt County Government owns it. You, the, the, the lease to the property for them to use it has been all executed. So there's really no hurry necessarily. So again, you can make that decision tonight or you can think about it and bring it back.
Okay, thank you for the information. I see Commissioner Nunnless Hand.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, if it's appropriate, um, make a brief comment. I, I do think that um, that we ought to move forward with, with option two. Um, I like the idea of reverter clause. Um, presumably if, if the county continues to be successful, um, if, if we have to deed it in fee simple, if it ceases to be in the public and, you know, used for public interest in the future, um, presumably that would be reverted back and, and we could, we could sell in that instance. But I like the idea, um, uh, moving forward. So I'll move that we, we go by option two. Um, and to transfer the deed to, to the Science Center.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
I forget this uh, thing. Uh, my question is to uh, Attorney uh, Gavlock. Can there be a um, in that contract or that, whatever we are giving it to, can there be a maintenance clause in there as to there? That the organization keep a maintenance schedule uh, on a regular basis?
So there's two parts to that answer potentially. Um, currently, we've accepted the property and the nonprofit is our tenant. And we have assumed a lease and that lease requires all maintenance to be performed by the tenant at no cost to the county. So that's currently in place by contract. Second phase of that is once we get to the point of a transfer, then maintenance is completely and solely the responsibility of the owner of the property, who would be the current tenant. The county would not have any responsibility for maintenance after that. The only time the county could potentially have responsibility for maintenance is if they fail to satisfy the public purpose condition and the property reverted back to the county at some point in the future, then it reverts back to us in its current condition.
That, that last if you just stated, um, can they uh, present uh, uh, a maintenance schedule or something as to what has happened to it as a maintenance?
I would probably have to investigate that further. It would not be typical to include a maintenance schedule as a covenant and a deed when you're transferring ownership of property. Um, but I understand, I think, where you're going with that, especially knowing that there's the potential that this property will need a new roof in the near future. So if you'll allow me to think on that some more and maybe have some conversations with the current tenant, I might be able to think of some creative ways to satisfy that concern without going rogue on a deed.
Well, I, I thought, uh, the reason I brought that up is I can recall that old um, Stoke School Building where property was not maintained and then it came back and then it became a, a, a really, it, it's still sitting there now as a vacant or a dilapidated property. And it makes things look bad in the community. And it makes things look bad in the community. But if you have a schedule of maintenance, physical maintenance on it, then you have some idea as to the condition of the property being maintained. And then, you know, because we're sort of like turning it over to them, then there should be some exercise for, just just keep it maintained.
There might be some expectation if you do that, that if we're then in the form of a landlord, that then we're going to contribute to that nonprofit to help maintain it.
Oh, no, 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 no. That's why they're getting it. That's my thinking. I mean, you know, you know, that that's what I'm thinking. If if it's not, I didn't say it was a requirement. I just said that they if we go to, that's the possibility.
I can certainly consider language as a covenant in the deed.
Thank you.
Commissioner Coulson? I think we have, we have a motion on the floor.
But we shouldn't have a motion on the floor when we haven't had discussion.
Commissioner Coulson?
I'd like to second Chris's motion, please.
Okay. I see Commissioner McGlaughorn's hand. Do you have a question, or you were you planning to second the motion?
Yeah, I was planning to second it, so we we can move on.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Ward, the same for you. Were you planning to second it, or you have a question?
Second it and move on.
All right. It's been, we have a second and and we'll have a vote. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Y-yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White has lost connection to the meeting. Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Chairwoman Huggins, two items real quick. One, just want to announce that on February first, at your next meeting, your six o'clock meeting, we are scheduling a public hearing for the the next lobs borrowing. That's the limited obligation bond. That's the two thousand and twenty one lobs. The primary purpose of that is the AG Cox Middle School addition renovation project. There is also, that's for the funding of that, plus there is also the the Warren Farm reimbursement to the county in there, some solid waste work in there. Also, there's a refunding and refinancing opportunities with prior debt that we'll bring forth. We'll spell all that out at at the next meeting on the first. Now, the last items real quick. I know an email went out to the Board of Commissioners regarding, I had a discussion with Chairwoman Floyd Huggins about having our meetings go all virtual, just trying to eliminate as much as social contact as we can. We've had that discussion with all of our department heads in regards to all other boards, commissions and whatnot, encouraging all of them to do the same until we can really get get ahead in this COVID virus situation. And with that, I'm finished.
Thank you. Certainly, we want to look at, you know, all of our departments and all having virtual meetings. Yes, thank you. We move to items for consent. We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Nunley.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We now move to items for decision. The first item is the ordinance establishing the Pitt County Renovation Commission. Second reading on this, we did not have a unanimous vote on it, so therefore, we have a second reading. Attorney Gallagher.
Yes, the motion, the ordinance is included in your packet as approved and revised by a majority of the board at your last meeting. It is now ready for consideration for its second reading. It need not pass unanimously. As long as it passes by a majority vote this evening, it will become an ordinance and be added to your ordinance book in Pitt County.
So we need a motion.
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Nunley.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
No.
Commissioner McGlaughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
Thank you.
Seven to one.
Eight to one. She's not here, so.
Seven.
Can the county attorney clarify the vote on that, just for the record?
Yes.
No, I I understand that now. That's right, because we didn't
Excuse her.
Approve her absence.
Right. Yes. So that's eight to one.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to item two, transfer property to the town of Griffin. Was that Jonas Hill?
I think James is taking it.
James is taking it. All right, James.
Yes, Madam Chair. We have several properties. I'll go through this presentation fairly quickly that we've acquired through the buyout program, but it is a good opportunity just to update you as to where we are overall in the buyout program, too. Just so you know, we do have a an application currently in for Florence, Hurricane Florence. It happened a couple of years ago. We have submitted, I think there were twenty one properties for consideration. We hope to be hearing back from that sometime in the next few months. And ESIAIS was also a federal declaration, but we haven't received any information about the buyout program for that. So back to Irene and Matthew, we did acquire thirteen properties overall, eight of which were in the town of Griffin's jurisdiction. And with this, we typically, when we have acquired properties within municipal boundaries previously, we offer those properties back to the municipalities because they tend to want to maintain them more routinely than maybe we would in the county. We are authorized to do this, but of course, whenever this happens, those restrictions from FEMA that we are bound by, once we acquire those properties, do transfer along. So this is just a map showing where these eight properties are located. Most of those in Irene were kind of upstream on the northern part of the town limits. For Matthew, they were down right along Contignia Creek here, so just orient you. And those are the total eight altogether. And tonight, Madam Chair, we're authorizing or we are asking for authorization for you to sign off on the documents necessary to transfer those properties. And our legal staff have has actually pulled together those documents for all eight properties, and we're ready to move forward with that transfer if you deem it appropriate.
All right, we, you've heard, James, do you have any questions? Okay, we will entertain a motion. Do we need a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, same. I can't see, I can't see anything.
You have two hands up, Commissioner Perkins-Williams and the Commissioner Nunley.
Okay, Perkins first.
I offer the motion, Madam Chairman, that we transfer the deed to the appropriate sources.
Okay. Commissioner Nunley.
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes. Florida twenty years ago.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll move to the next item. And Brian's going to come up, reimbursement resolution of budget amendment for AG Cox Middle School renovation project, phase one.
Good evening, Madam, Madam Chairwoman and Board of Commissioners. We're bringing forward to you tonight an opportunity to move along the two thousand and twenty one lobs project that Scott mentioned earlier during his report, which involves primarily AG Cox Middle School, the Warren Farm property, and some equipment at the solid waste site. To help move the project along and to keep costs down, Pitt County Schools has asked that we look at a reimbursement resolution to fund what we're calling phase one of AG Cox Middle School renovation. This will allow us to go ahead and purchase now some construction material at a lower cost instead of waiting until later this spring and early summer when the price may go up. We're looking to use our restricted Article forty and forty two sales tax revenue for the, that revenue can only be spent on school capital and school debt. And then, once the two thousand and twenty one lobs go through in April, we would reimburse Article forty and forty fund balance for roughly one million, six hundred and twenty one thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. So we're asking tonight if it's okay for me to sign the reimbursement resolution and then to enact the budget amendment to move the money from restricted fund balance over to Pitt County Schools. On the Zoom tonight is Aaron Eckerson with Pitt County Schools. He's their Assistant Facilities Director. So if you have any specific questions about any of the material, Aaron is available. Other than that, I I do ask that we look at the reimbursement resolution and the budget amendment.
Can I have a comment? Just that the one point six million is part of the total project cost of, I think it's twelve point four million. So this will, once we borrow, get the borrowing proceeds from the lobs, this one point six would be part of that twelve point four million dollar overall project for the AG Cox project.
Commissioner Ward. Yes, if a motion is needed, I would like to make the motion that we concur with the staff recommendation and move forward. Perkins-Williams.
I'd like to second the comment from Commissioner Ward.
Okay.
When it's appropriate.
It's been moved in second, Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We move to number four, appointments to the Pitt County Farm and Food Council. Scott.
Yes, ma'am, you have a recommendation from Lee Guth, who is the Corporate Extension Director. She's recommending that Keisha Pittman, Mary Frances McClure, and Brandon Quills to fill these seats.
Commissioner Ward.
I move that we accept the recommendations by our legally.
Commissioner Nunley.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick. Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes, and my battery is running low, so I might have to pop off.
Okay, motion, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll move to number five appointment to Pitt County Area Transit System.
Yes, here you have a recommendation from Kim Cooper, Director of Pats, for Larry Weston, and this will be fill the the community college seat, looks like.
Madam, Commissioner Ward.
I was just going to say it's Laura Weston.
Laura.
And I would like to move that we accept this appointment.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We're down to number twelve, Commissioner comments. So we'll start with Commissioner Perkins-Williams. Your hand is still up, so we'll start.
I I like to, before I go off, I'd like to say Happy New Year to the residents of Pitt County. And I would like, also like to say to the residents living in the Belvoir Township, we will be having a town hall virtual meeting on January the seventeenth at three P M. And I hope you all will retain, accept the invitation to attend that meeting. Thank you so much. Appreciate your cooperation and stick with removing your trash.
Commissioner Albright.
No comment.
Commissioner Coulson.
No comment.
Commissioner McGlaughorn.
No comment.
Commissioner Ward.
No comment.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
No comment.
Commissioner Nunley.
No comment.
Okay, did I get everybody? Okay, I do have some comments.
I believe there's an additional comment. Kimberly, will you go ahead from Lauren White?
Okay, Commissioner White asked that her comment be read. She would like to see Pitt County follow suit with other counties and cities nearby in sending a letter to suddenly internet and possibly CenturyLink or other providers. The letter's purpose will be to ask the North Carolina Attorney General to initiate an investigation. One of the most common complaints I've received during my time on the board has been about our internet service providers. I would like to work with the county staff to draft the letter and at welcome and welcome to input from other board members to present for adoption at our next meeting.
I think we would need to put it on the agenda for next meeting to consider that.
I concur with that. I've got nothing but problems.
I was going to suggest that it go on the next meeting, but I certainly support what she's saying.
Okay, well.
Go ahead and have her work with county staff to have that available.
Yeah, we'll take care of that.
Okay. All right, my comments, I have three, three statements to make. Number one, I would like to call our attention to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Quarterly Magazine, where Pitt County is mentioned, and it shows a picture of our former Chair Chairman, Mel McGlaughorn, and our Sheriff, Paula Dance. We are highlighted as the all American county by the National Civil League. So I want to call our attention to to that magazine. My other item is that we heard from about the seven, and I want to remind our citizens not to let our guard down, continue with practicing our three Ws. And my last statement is that I'm still processing what I saw on TV at the Capitol. I'm saddened by what I witnessed. But and I want to make a statement. The basic foundation of our democratic process means that we may not find agreements on every issue. However, we have a process established by the Constitution that we However, we have a process established by the Constitution that we, as elected officials and citizens, must respect and abide by so that our system that gives hope and sets an example throughout the world will work. An assault on our Capitol is an assault on the people. As elected officials, we should denounce the type of violence we all witnessed last week in Washington, DC. Lives were lost, many were hurt, and federal property was damaged. It can start with us as local officials here, right here in Pitt County, continuing to work together because Pitt County Government believes that our purpose is public service. Thus, we adhere to values that support decision-making that is deliberate, conscious, conscientious, and based on facts. Thank you, and meet, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.